He is or may become a participant, specifically Hamas Mountain Electric Co-op, Inc., and the Navajo Nation redistricting lawsuit pursuant to Section ten fifteen dash one H. Matters discussed were limited to only to those contained in the notice of the special closed meeting. Please include, oh, let me read that. All right, thank you. All right, now will I rise for? Oh, oh, yeah, please, please include this statement in the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Daniel, would you read us in prayer?
Yes. Father in heaven, beloved, we thank thee for this day and we're asking that thy spirit will be with us here at this commission meeting. We're thankful for all that we have. We're thankful for America, the land that we live in. We're thankful that we have the freedoms that we do. We ask that we will be able to go forth today and, and all get along and do what we need to do to make this county a continued success and we'll make the right decisions. We pray for our land. We pray for rain. We're thankful that we can see the blue sky and the green grass. We have our livestock and pets. We're thankful for all that we have and we ask again for rain, for mother earth, that we can help take care of our crops and, and livestock. We ask blessings in all things. We acknowledge also thy hand in all things. Yes, we do, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Baxton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its three republics, which stands on this land, in this all, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Board of Finance?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we move into the Board of Finance.
All in favor? Any opposed? Not hearing any? Move into, Mr. Carroll?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This will be brief. Um, every year, we are authorized by statute to impose a five dollar minimum penalty on our delinquent taxpayers, but we also have the option to waive that by resolution. So I'm asking that you approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero six, waiving the minimum requirement. And that's all I need.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four, zero, six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry.
Mr. Chair, I move, we move out of Board of Finance and into the regular meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go back into regular meeting. Um, is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just one typo that's been corrected in the agenda copy in front of you, but just want to make sure that on consent item number nine, uh, it does say consideration approval of FY twenty-four client fees and a copy of, of the agenda that was previously sent out. It had FY twenty-three. So just want to make sure that that was noted for the record.
Right. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Ready? All. Oh, we did, yeah, we did.
We need to approve the agenda. Move to approve the agenda.
Sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. All right, now I can sit. I'll catch up with you guys here in a minute. Consideration of approval of regular many minute, meet, meeting minutes from June twenty-seven to twenty-twenty-three. Number two, consideration of approval of finance check register for June twenty-twenty-three. Consideration of approval of treasure check register for twenty for June twenty-twenty-three. Number four, consideration of FY twenty-three budget adjustment, number nineteen, resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, one. Number five, consideration of approval of FY twenty-three final quarter finance, financial report, resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, two. Consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, four, and twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, five for the disposition of county surplus distribution. And number seven, consideration of approval of a contract with Santa Clara Pueblo uh, for non-guaranteed bed space to the house ju, house juvenile, to house juvenile detainees. Number eight, consideration of approval of temporary limited use agreement with Montezuma County, Colorado to house a female juvenile detainee. And consideration of approval for FY twenty-four. Twenty-three, twenty-three, oh, twenty-four, 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 yes, client fees for alternative sentencing division.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we can present an agenda of this.
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you guys very much. All right, new business. Presentation on call attendee for non-emergency phone lines, Cole Brown. Hello, welcome.
Chairman and the Commission, um, I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit today about our non-emergency phone lines with the dispatch centers. You know, I'm the director there. And we, like everyone else, have struggled with staffing. Um, we're doing much better right now. We're, we're actually in a good place. But I still have, I'm still running into the situation where my dispatchers who are dedicated to police and fire radios, which are very busy, are still having to answer emergency calls. And that's a lot of stress on them. And I think that a way to kind of take that load off their back a little bit is to implement a call attendant on our non-emergency lines. So our emergency lines will still be answered directly and immediately by a, a human, alive person, um, one of our trained dispatchers or call takers. But on our non-emergency lines, we take a lot of phone calls that aren't necessarily something that we can dispatch on. They're either calls looking for the animal shelter phone numbers, people wanting to check warrants on themselves, or they're looking for the court phone number, or there's a lot of things that go along with it. So we spend a lot of time, my dispatchers and my call takers spend a lot of time redirecting these calls. So I think implementing a call attendant, um, on the front end of that, you know, press one if you'd like police, fire, medical assistance, and then three if you'd like the shelters and, and so on and so forth. So we're, we look to implement it in August, but I wanted to bring this to the Commission, let you guys know more about it, why we're doing it, and kind of the reasoning behind it, let you guys ask questions. That way, as we implement it, if the community has questions, you are going to be the people they reach out to, if they can't get ahold of me. So I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to ask the questions, get the information, so that as we implement it and the community is asking questions, you guys can answer them and you have the information that you're all ready to go.
Mr. Smith?
So when you dial nine-one-one, it will, if it's emergency, it goes right to an operator, but how does it go to whatever number to?
So if you call our non-emergency line, which is three-three-four-six-six-two-two, um, you'll get, it'll be picked up first by the automated system. And it will say, you know, like so many, like the city of Bloomfield, I think, has it, I'm sure. Um, there's different versions around it, you know, doctor's offices, things like that. So it'll just kind of triage the call and make sure that it's a call for the services that we dispatch for. If it's not, if, you know, we'll try to reroute it to the other services, like the courts and the animal shelter. Um, we're trying to retrain the public that they can check for warrants online. They don't necessarily have to call us for that service. So just those little things like that, that we're trying to, to redirect those calls that our dispatchers don't necessarily need to be tied up on or transferring. Um, so they can take those non-emerg, or they can take the emergency calls.
So right now, people are calling nine-one-one for non-emergencies?
No, so we answer both lines. So whichever one rings first. So if, you know, uh, my dispatcher's tied up on a non-emergency call at a nine-one-one rings, then, or my call taker is doing that, and the dispatcher handling the radio has to answer that nine-one-one. So I'm trying to eliminate some of these non-emergency calls, so my call takers can focus more on nine-on-ones. And my dispatchers can focus on the radio and the safety of our first responders. Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I may have to have you educate me on how to check for warrants online, because I sent all my six-six-two shit. You know, educate me and we'll probably cut it in half.
I think inimcourts.gov, if you go on there, you can search, and you don't, it doesn't necessarily have to be on yourself, but you can check warrants on anyone. But, um, you should be able to search by name and, and look it up there.
And so on, so on the public Odyssey site, it has warrant status.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And, and we are, we'll be pushing people also to contact the court, because there are times, I mean, we house all the original copies, but there'll be times where it's at the court and it hasn't gotten to us yet. We don't necessarily know if it's valid yet or not. So it's just more accurate if you're checking that, the court's system.
Oh, it's the Inim case look, look up then?
I think you can search by the.
I'm curious. I mean, I know about Inim court case, but obviously.
And I think there's a public version of Odyssey, I think. I, I just, and I need to be more proficient with that, because the easy answer is call non-emergency.
Yes, no, I know.
And then for like, uh, burn permits, whenever they're allowed in the, in the, hopefully the near future, when it starts raining, um, do they still call non-emergency dispatch for that, or?
Well, during the week, they'll need to call, uh, the, the fire office. So they take that information. And then on the weekends, we don't necessarily issue the burn permit, but we will take the information so that we have it and we have the guidelines that they read and we read it to the public. So we'll still handle those kinds of calls. The only calls that this will impact are the calls we shouldn't really be handling in the first place, so.
And will the, will the call tree or the, what do you call it?
Automated attendant or call attendant.
Will they actually send them to the, like, transfer the call to the shelter?
Yes. Well, to the animal shelters, it will, to the jail, it will. Um, but the courts, it was too, there's too many. So we're, it'll be a recording with all the different.
Give them the information.
Yeah.
And it won't be never-ending, frustrating?
Four options.
Okay.
And, um, if, you know, we have like a, a hearing impaired person using a TDD or a TTY, anything like that, um, it will automatically route to an operator, so they could.
Oftentimes I just get frustrated and just yell for a real person.
The first option is a real person. Option one.
Okay.
We, we are reluctant to let go of this, because that, you know, it is a really great thing for our community that as soon as you call non-emergency dispatch, you get a live person who is local and who understands what you're, you're trying to relay to them. Um, but it's just no longer feasible with our staff.
Well, just looking at the number of calls, how many non-emergency calls do you get?
Um, over
Two hundred thousand?
Three thousand, yeah. So it's a lot. And our nine-on-ones are only sixty-four thousand. So if I can take ten thousand calls off my dispatchers, it will make a big impact. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. I, I do want to add, though, that, um, after the events in Farmington, the city of Farmington, I was down in the call center.
Yes, you did, came that day.
And it just amazes me, um, how, how you guys work down there and the efficiency is just.
We really appreciate you guys checking on us and bringing us food and thinking about us. It means a lot. Um, dispatch often gets forgotten and they really truly are an amazing group of people, so I, I'm in awe of them.
I just get stressed walking in the building, so I can only imagine what they do taking calls.
Well, I drop a call every time I get one and I'm trying to like hang up on one and answer the other, so. Way upon my, way beyond my skill set, for sure.
Yeah, and you guys are all always welcome to come in, take a tour and, and ride along if you want and see, see what they're doing.
All right. Well, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, two, consideration of approval of twenty-twenty-three Edward Bryan Memorial Justice, Roy Tanner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Very good, thank you. I think we have the JAG grant first. So this is the twenty-twenty-three Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant. This is an annual grant that we receive. It's non-competitive. You just have to apply for it. This year, we, we stand to receive forty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. And we would be using the allocation of purchase ink for mobile data computers and red dot reflex sites for our patrol rifles. Um, there are no matching funds, as I said. Before I stand for questions, there is a component to this grant that requires opportunity for public comment, so usually just take a few moments for that.
All right, we'll open it up for a public comment. All right, now I'm hearing any?
Stand for any questions on that one.
Okay. Anybody have questions for him? What, what's the? What did you call it? The reflective?
The red, the red dot reflex.
Yes.
Site. So it's a red dot optic site for the rifles.
So you can actually see the red dot?
Yeah, it's quicker, it's quicker, it's more precise.
Okay.
More precise site acquisition.
That's what I was getting in my mind, but I didn't know if it was something, so they couldn't see the red dot.
It just looks like a small scope.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any question?
Is there any match to this grant?
No, there's not.
All right, I'll stand for a motion unless there's.
I'd move to approve, uh, the fiscal year twenty-three, is it twenty-three, uh, JAG agreement?
Yes. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry.
Thank you.
Number three.
Okay.
Still you.
The next item I have is, uh, another initiative by our legislative, or legislatures during this past session. Fifty-seven million dollars of funding was approved from New Mexico law enforcement agencies to help build personnel to triage the crisis that we're having there. The application allows for funding for salaries of vacant certified officers as well as civilian support staff. The funding is to be spread out over three years with the amount cut and hatch in half each subsequent year. Based on the number of agencies across the state and the amount of funding available, we propose applying for twelve of our twenty-three vacant deputy positions to be funded. Um, through a, a online meeting that we had the other day, this is just for salaries is what it would be used for. So anyone hired after July twenty-four days ago, through the rest of this fiscal year, it could be applied to their salaries. And I stand for any questions on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. I know we did something like this last year. How many deputies did we get hired through the program last year?
I think that we picked up, I think we picked up fourteen, and of those fourteen, eleven are still with us. Three didn't make it through the academy.
Okay. And we went from, what was our highest vacancy? I know I'm asking and reaching.
It's okay, and I wish I'd come with some more historic data. We are.
We're, we're sitting better than we were last year, though, right?
We are, with more on the horizon in our testings, we're having more success. We've got more people in background than we've had for a while, so it's looking, it's looking better than past years.
And what would you contribute that to? Like signing bonus?
I do. I think that the, the hiring and signing, the hiring, signing bonus, and then the retention bonus that we did last year, we saw fewer people leave than we have in a, in a number of years. And, uh, we've had a couple family circumstances have to leave, and that's a major factor, that they come get a copy of that contract, because it required another year, if they got the retention bonus, to see how much they're going to have to pay back. So I think that's a significant factor.
All right. And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Baxton, um, as of our June HR report, um, Sheriff's Office has approved for a hundred and thirty-seven positions. Uh, they had staffing at that point, time of a hundred and sixteen. Now, there's, some of those vacancies are civilian positions, so.
When was that as?
This was as of June, so that's our most recent.
That captured our most recent civilian, yeah. So one of those, I think, was civilian, maybe two, depending on the timing of that report.
All right.
Yep.
But it sounds like it's working.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
This is just a comment. Uh, I know right now it seems like it's really hard to recruit employees. And, um, I know it, sometimes it's rougher on the ones who've been there for years and years, and they feel like, you know, they should have more, um, positive strokes or better incentives for them, but, uh, I know how the situation is where you, you have to draw in people for recruitment, and part of that is the salary thing. But, um, I always want to thank, thank the, the ones who have been there for years and dedicated, and they do a good job for us.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to them. I'm proud of them. They, they're picking up the slack of us being shorthanded and they're doing well.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve, uh, the fund submission.
Any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Number four, consideration of approval of resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, seven, adopting the New Mexico Infrastructure Capital ICIP. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, the infrastructure and capital improvement plan is provided on an annual basis to the state of New Mexico Local Government Division and provides the following information: the entity's planning process, goals, trends, inventory, five-year project summary, including project priority, description, budget, possible funding sources, operating expenditures, and implementation schedule. In addition, San Juan County is required to identify the top five capital projects to earmark for the governor's funding consideration during the twenty-twenty-four legislative session. Input to the plan was garnered through two public meetings held on the following dates and locations: June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, Lower Valley, at the Lower Valley Senior Center, and June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, at the County Administrative Building. Additional feedback was received via email and social media comments. The following projects were deleted from last year's list due to fully funding by state legislative appropriations, grant funding, or county internal funding. The McGee Park Poultry Rabbit Barn Replacement and Outdoor Riding Arena Improvements, Cold Mill and Asphalt Resurfacing of County Road sixty-four eighty, and the Bridge Improvement on County Road three thousand, Bridge thirty-one, twenty-one. The following projects were added as a result of the public input and additional feedback received. County Road forty-nine, ninety improvements, Cold Mill and Asphalt Resurfacing on County Road three fifty, Phase two, Cold Mill and Chip Sail Resurfacing, County Road seventy-nine hundred, County Road thirty-nine hundred, East Pinion Hills Boulevard, Phase three construction, Bridge Improvement on County Road thirty-five hundred, Bridge eighty-one, eleven, Construction, uh, Cold Mill and Asphalt Resurfacing on County Road twenty-nine hundred, Bridge Improvements on County Road sixty-six, seventy-five, Bridge number fifty-seven, twenty-two, Cold Mill and Asphalt Resurfacing on County Road fifty-two, ninety, Cold Mill and Asphalt Resurfacing on County Road three ninety. Staff additionally made updates to estimated costs of certain remaining projects due to anticipated inflation, as well as renamed the prior year's Men's Transitional Shelter to Crisis Drop-In Triage Center. Staff requests direction of the priorities and subsequent approval of resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, seven, for San Juan County's five-year list of potential capital project and a prioritization of projects for this year's upcoming legislative session.
I'll now stand for questions. All right, any questions for anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make it, uh, or clarify that you talked about forty-nine, ninety, road forty-nine, ninety. That's not in lieu of the bridge for the entire road. It's just a certain, like, low-water crossings that we had trouble with last year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. That's, uh, I believe it's going to be, it's kind of an immediate attempt to improve uh, that road for the diverted traffic.
I know there's at least three or four low-water crossings and a couple of them flooded pretty bad last year, and, and, uh, right now people use that more temporarily, because of the Largo Bridge being closed. So if, if they flood out, it's going to make it even worse. But I just wanted to clarify that we still want the bridge, or I do, and I think my constituents do too. So we're not, uh, uh, improving the whole road as an alter, uh, alternative to, you know, the bridge. So I think that's clear then, right?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I noticed it was Men's Transitional Shelter, but now it's changed to Crisis Drop-In Triage Center. So does that mean the new name accepts anybody?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, uh, I'd like to divert the mic start.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, so that, originally, the Men's Transitional, um, Shelter was an offshoot, uh, from the, um, current program we have in place today at Alternative Sentencing, which is the Axis Program, which is a uh, women's-only substance abuse treatment program. So that was a project that we had listed in here, uh, because at the time of our behavioral health gap analysis, uh, which this commission, or previous commission, conducted in twenty-nineteen, that was noted as an opportunity for the future uh, for providing, you know, those types of behavioral health treatment services here in San Juan County. With, uh, recently the commission approving the use of H cap funding for, um, the study feasibility study and business plan of a, of a drop-in crisis triage center, uh, and that actually being a project that was brought to light at, to us at the Lower Valley Senior Center from one of the citizens there. We thought that would be most appropriate to focus our effort on that project, given it uh, will, will affect a broader group of citizens and certainly a lot of stakeholder support that we're seeing right now from law enforcement, uh, from the courts, Public Defender's Office, the District Attorney, San Juan Regional Medical Center, and PMS, that, that see that being the highest need in our community right now. Of course, we're having that studied, and, you know, the results of that study will come back to this body, uh, for your consideration. So that, that was the thought behind staff making that change. If you wanted to, to do something differently, we certainly can.
What? Any other questions for Mr. Porter? All right, with that, I'll stand for a motion.
Your first bridge. Twenty-three, twenty-four, zero, seven, adopting the Mexico Infrastructure Capital Plan, twenty-five, twenty-nine.
Let's second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, if I could at this time, it might be appropriate, back to the bridge. If, uh, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we, the county, write letters to the oil companies, or at least the major oil companies, to see if we could get some, so, so, some donations, to solicit some donations, grants, whatever, that we could do to help with the Largo Bridge, Five Mile Bridge. So I make that motion.
Really have you on the agenda.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDaniel, certainly, uh, that's, um, I, the request that we could, we could certainly take action on a, a staff. If you'd like us to move forward with that, that's something we could do. Um, probably need to put something more formal together on the next agenda to, to memorialize that, but we could certainly do that.
Whatever it takes.
Okay. All right. Number five, consideration of approval of resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, eight, Saddle Island County Official Polling Places. County Clerk, on your show.
Chairman and members of the Commission, Section one dash three dash two requires the Board of County Commissioners to designate by resolution the polling places for the um, statewide elections conducted in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. This resolution provides for the designation of these polling places, and I have attached, you should have it in your packet, a list of all of those. There are no changes. They are the same polling places that we are currently using, um, and there's a total of thirty-three. I stand for any questions.
When was the last time we increased polling place?
So we actually decreased, uh, when we went from having seventy-seven polling places. Um, then we, we actually had, went to thirty-four, and then we've been at a consistent. Then we, we actually had, went to 34, and then we've been at a consistent 33. So the, the reason for the decrease was voters were required to vote at their actual polling precinct. So at one point, we had 77 in the county. So with voting convenience centers, a voter can go anywhere. You know, if they live in Blanco but work, you know, in Farmington, they could vote as they go through Bloomfield, or they could vote at, in, at site in Farmington. So that, the, virtually what allows us to do that is a consolidation of 10 precincts per voting convenience center. And it's been successful, and the voters love being, having the choice, and at their convenience, they can.
Go anywhere.
Go anywhere.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you for the outline areas, and I'm glad that there, you know, the voters out there, that's convenient for them. So I commend you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. No other discussion? I'll stand for a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number 232408, designating San Juan County official polling places for statewide elections conducted in 2024 and 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, okay. Thank you, Ms. Shelby.
Thank you.
Consideration of approving FY24 final budget, resolution 2324. Ms. Mark.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chairman. In your packet is the FY24 final budget book for your consideration for approval. I'm pleased to say this is a balanced budget, and we have met the state requirements of a 3/12 reserve for the general fund and a 1/12 reserve for the road fund. The budget is due to the DFA by July 31, 2023, and the state will have until September 6 to approve the final budget. A recap of the budget includes total budgeted revenues of $136,782,572. Total budgeted expenditures are $183,397,594. The budgeted expenditures are higher than revenues due to several factors, including spending down one-time revenue sources and/or grants. The overall capital outlay for FY24 is 17.6 million. This includes several PO carryovers from FY23 due to supply chain issues and/or shipping delays in the amount of 3.6 million. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank elected officials and department heads for all of their hard work getting their budgets to the finance department timely, and my staff for helping to pull this all together. Thank you so much, and I will stand for any questions.
All right. Well, first, we'd like to thank you, because we know how much work goes into this, you and your staff, and everybody involved.
Thank you.
Including the public, because we have public meetings for people to come in and voice their opinion. So we commend you on that, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, it's, it's great that the, the funding request by the service providers, a lot of them admit what they requested.
Yeah.
That's a real good indication for our county and our commissioners, so I thank you for that.
Sure, you bet.
All right. Anything else? Stand for a motion.
Move that we approve FY24 final budget resolution number 232403.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Job well done. All right. Report on inspection of detention center.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just a reminder to, at your convenience, to go visit the jail and do the inspection report. Thanks.
Does anyone yet?
Not to my knowledge.
I suppose we have the chair doing a cover inspection.
You know, I, I don't know the exact date. The last one we submitted was in mid-August, but I, I can check on that for you.
I may be doing one unwillingly. The sheriff, the sheriff sitting over there, he can't wait.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sawyer.
Thank you.
Report from county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It is county fair time, so I just want to remind everyone, of course, the commission as well as the public at large, the largest county fair in the state of New Mexico, and we're only second in terms of attendance to the state fair. So August 7 through the 12th, the concerts, which are very popular, start on Thursday, and then the county fair parade, which will have a entry in the parade, is August 4 at 6:00 PM in downtown Farmington. So let us know if you're interested in riding on the float. It's, it, it's a event put on by the county fair board, and of course, with a tremendous amount of support from parks and facilities. Let's see, Daniel or Steven here, but certainly want to thank that entire department with the amount of effort they put into, to making the fair a tremendous success every year. So, and if folks need information, citizens need information on the fair, sanjuancountyfairnm.net, and they do have their calendar events up, and the fair guide are now available, so good place to go for information. We'll link to it on our website here soon, as we know that's information that citizens are certainly, certainly desire yourself. We recently held for our employees a employee summer picnic, and had quite a few in attendance, about 350 employees and their families. And I just want to thank those that made that happen. Tiffany Aiken, who serves as the chair of our employee activity committee, and all the members of the EAC, and other volunteers that made that event, just a great event at Brookside Park. Thank you, because it was, like I said, a tremendous success, and good to see a lot of folks and families with smiling faces, especially those coming out of Bisti Bay. They're having a lot of fun with that, so. And appreciate the city of Farmington for allowing us the use of their facilities. They're very accommodating for us in that regard. East Culpeper Water Line Project, that's a project we've been working on. I had to go back and look myself, since 2014, when we had the preliminary engineering report finished, and of course, we're seeking funding to make that project a reality, extending the North Star line up to that subdivision to be able to serve that area that'd been hauling water for quite some time. So that project is complete. Mr. Cox handed it over to Mr. Smith, and, and it's now ready to go for ribbon cutting. So 2:00 PM on August 15th, would like to invite you to that. We'll send out a calendar invite and be able to enjoy that. And outside of that, that's all I have for you this evening. Oh, I take that back, I do have one other item. Just that we've been playing host to a lot of state agencies and officials here of late. We had a great meeting with the New Mexico Environment Department, wanting to learn more about our septic safe campaign, the San Juan County Fire and Rescue Department, which Mr. Neely put together. That's something I, I know that New Mexico Environment Department's interested in expanding that statewide and partnering with us on that effort. And so I think a lot more is going to come as a result of that. In fact, Chief Vega and Mr. Neely are participating in a, in a webinar with some other New Mexico Environment Department officials Thursday that weren't able to attend the meeting up here. We were also able to give a tour of the Tota subdivision project. They were very interested in that, being one of our ARPA-funded projects, and to know more about how we're regionalizing sewer out into the county and trying to, and that's one way to eliminate a septic problem, is to not have septic tanks by having folks connected to sewer. So they're very interested in that as well. And then, of course, last week, we hosted, shouldn't say we hosted, San Juan College hosted the Legislative Finance Committee, of course, a lot of different events associated with that, which I know some of you attended, and the opportunity to share with Legislative Finance Committee some of the initiatives here related to energy, some of the challenges we face economically here in San Juan County. So all in all, a really good week, and anytime we get the opportunity to spend time with our local legislators and statewide legislators, it's always time, time well spent. So just wanted to share that with you. I can stand for any questions you might have.
Are you going to have any? Okay. Report from elected officials and department heads.
Mr. Chairman, for once, I have a statement. It's, it's because I, I forgot to remind Mr. Stark of it, but the Attorney General's Office has entered into yet another settlement with the opioid manufacturers and distributors and pharmacies. It's one with Walgreens, Amneal, KVK Tech, and it's in the amount of $3 million. And Mr. Stark, you authorized Mr. Stark to sign participation agreements, so he's done that, and we've sent them to the Attorney General's Office, and that was it.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to say that we've gone through some staffing changes in my department, Human Resources, and had a recent recruitment for a deputy human resources officer. And through the recruitment, as a result, I want to introduce our new deputy HR officer, Melissa Wood. So she's going to be my helper, helping us out in a lot of capacity. She'll continue to oversee the benefits and compensation, as well as insurance, as we transition over to the state's health insurance plan. So just wanted to make this announcement, and let you guys know. Our current deputy HR officer, Tara Martinez, is, will be resigning, so her last day will be next Tuesday on August 1. So want to continue with providing good services and all of that, and I know Melissa will be there to provide us with that as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Does that mean you still, you'll still field all of my silly questions and requests?
All right. Thank you. Comments and input from the general public? Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to the comments or inputs from the general public. Do you have any general public here today?
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Once again, this is twice one meeting, but for our closed session item, I just wanted, that's on the agenda, I wanted to note that there's no need for an update on the Navajo Nation litigation, no cap portion, and that we will be announcing the result of the other item when we come back into open session.
Okay. All right. So closed session.
Mr. Chairman, we go into closed session to discuss, or to continue discussion on limited personnel matter, matters, county managers, county managers evaluation pursuant to section 10151H2.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, we will go into closed session. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Go ahead, sir. Are we ready? Mr. Chair, I'd move that we, uh, come out of our executive meeting and return back to the regular meeting and state that as we're coming out of the closed session, uh, we didn't discuss anything beyond the limited personnel matters, the county managers evaluation pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one H two of the Mo, Open Meetings Act. No matter was discussed except for what was posted on the notice for closed session, uh, and only matter one on the closed session. Uh, as a result of our evaluation, the commission has decided to place Mr. Stark, uh, Stark's salary on the metric at E X zero one, step nine dash one on the compensation scale.
Second?
I don't, I don't think it requires that, does it?
No, I think it's just a statement of
But there was a motion to enter back into the regular meeting.
Yes.
Can we have a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Be back in regular session? Get us out of here. All right. No further business, so we will adjourn.